We're gonna get this down so about ten o'clock. Okay, listen, we got a lot to cover today, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Hey, hey. It is Tuesday, June 14, 2016, call the meeting to order. Uh, minutes and reports received and filed?
We have a sharing fee for May 2016 and May 2016 pledge review file.
Liaison reports, upcoming meetings, none of that?
Planning commission meeting tonight, Campo tomorrow, quarter drill, third quarter meeting tomorrow, Camper Connections Thursday, Thursday Night Live Thursday. And tractors, multiple tractors inside of it. In most of it, don't ask. About it, Father Day, Sunday, what are we doing, taking us to dinner?
Great.
Parks, Parks meeting today, and there's some infrastructure discussion for the Community Health Center on Friday.
I got Caporation Executive Board meeting tomorrow, St. Mary's Ice Cream Social, either for this, that's not bad. Uh, Friday, there's a, at three o'clock, they're dedicating a plaque at the foot up on Lafayette, and then the Missouri State Technical College Foundation has a dinner at night. And Saturday is the Juneteenth. They've got a kickoff at 11:20, they'd like for one of us to be there, I can't get away. You guys are there, what do you want?
What is it, Saturday?
Saturday, 11:20 at Riverside.
Might be able to be there, if that's...
Yeah.
What time?
11:20 is when they're gonna go. A little welcoming speech and all that.
We got a lot of trust in Riverside.
Riverside.
Okay.
That is all I have, uh, bids and contracts, bid award discussion, and concurrence on the Stadium Boulevard and Jefferson Street intersection improvement, city-county cooperating project.
Might not have this easy.
We need smaller drinks. Oh, oh, this is...
The City of Jefferson, they opened bids on the Stadium Boulevard, intersection three, intersection four project. Well, David reminded me, it was made by... And, uh, bids came in very competitive, Land and Construction is the, the apparent low bidder, and the city would like to, uh, award the project to them. The amount of $2,110,0598, seventy-four cents, fifteen percent by Ruby and their investment. And as we normally do with quality projects, uh, whoever bids, uh, before it's awarded, gets concurrence from the other entity prior to awarding this. And David, I think you had that on, we'll give them tonight.
Uh, it was introduced this past Monday, and will perhaps have final reading this next Monday.
Okay. So, um, that's really all we're here for, David, can you answer any questions about the project, bid in particular? Um, and then we just need the County Commission to agree with the city to award to Land and Construction.
So there's also some federal dollars, uh, in this project, about just shy of a half million. Um, so we've also requested and received, uh, concurrence from MoDOT for, uh, for land, uh, to do the project.
I don't really have any questions, I mean, this is gonna be a two-year project, so some of the work will be done this year, and the intersection will be done next year.
Right, the way it's laid out, uh, we had a little issue in trying to acquire some of the right-of-way at a time of fashion. We actually hoped to build the whole thing this year, but, uh, the way it worked out, uh, what we were planning to do is, it's a lot of work that needs to happen outside the existing right-of-way, because the roundabout's actually getting pushed to the west, into what used to be Cape, into Cape York and Tring and Luthern's property, so there's a lot of area over there that we can actually do some construction without closing the road. So the intention is to do that and actually widen parts of the eastern and western limits of Stadium, uh, this fall, get some of the stormwater pipes in the ground, and then, depending on how quickly the contractor works through that, there might be a period where we aren't doing anything at all. And then, once the state traffic gets over next year, in 2017, we'll systematically close one leg of the intersection at a time, build that part of the roundabout, so, uh, the intersection won't ever all be closed, but it will be later to be closed in session through next summer. The project should be finished by August 15th or the 17th.
I don't have any questions either, it's been going on for a while, we just only got a bid, so I'd love to see if it's still moving.
It's probably interesting.
Yeah, and our biggest concern is, you know, trying to maintain the, uh, the traffic to the high schools, and that's part of the reason for the project initially, is to get those folks off the highway. And so I think the way that we have it timed, uh, you know, we should be able to, you know, maintain that traffic, uh, coming into the high schools, so... Um, but yeah, it's, it'll be, I mean, it's, Stadium is, you know, one of the first loops around the city, you know, so they have a lot of volume on it, so...
Well, Lafayette will be done by then too, so...
Yes.
People can be a little bit more creative.
And we'll lead off, and we'll train people to, uh, split up a little bit more.
So what we need a motion for today? Uh, I don't know, it's been a few years since we've had one like this, but I think you just, uh, approve the, approve concurrence with, or concurrence with, uh, cities award the land, right?
But you like the name of one?
Motion that we concur with the cities.
Recommendation?
Recommendation to award to...
Land.
There you go.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Hey, sorry.
I'm just seeing how, while it was morning.
Yeah, thanks Dave.
Okay, contract award and signing for Parkview Meadows subdivision, NID project.
Do you have a copy of this on the computer?
Yes.
This one's bigger. You can zoom in on the computer somewhere, right there, on that, the Zenga. Yeah, we, uh, we bid, the Parkview Meadows subdivision neighborhood improvement project, you first, uh, bids, uh, came in, um, quite a big, big range, uh, we had a discussion of this a week ago, last Friday, um, in the hearing that held on Parkview Meadows subdivision, NID. Uh, Project Kaufman Enterprises is the, uh, was the low bidder, at $394,330.50. And, um, quite a big range between them and the next low, which we're there excavating. Tom Kaufman is here, and he has three questions about, really, his bid compared, very, very close to Mara, except the concrete pavement, we didn't replace, uh, the quantity, the bid price was quite a bit lower, and Tom and I have assessed it, bigger size, and he's comfortable with that, that price, so, uh, he's ready to get going on the project, and we recommend award to Kaufman Enterprises, uh, at, uh, $394,330.50. Probably a lot of people out there in there, but it happens, we keep the lower price, huh? Get some chocolate chip cookies and stuff while y'all turn that stuff out.
And she loves free dumpling before Christmas, right?
Right.
So you might actually get some cookies.
I don't have any question, but if y'all went through this last Friday, do you hear?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed one.
You got a contract?
I got a contract.
I move that we award and sign the contract with Kaufman Enterprises for Parkview Meadows subdivision, NID, improvement project.
Second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Uh, contract award and signing for 2016 chip seal program?
You should have a copy of the, um, cancellation quantities and price on that. This, you recall, was, uh, we, uh, between a cooperative procurement, uh, with, uh, Boone and Callaway Counties bid. They bid, there were, April 16th, I'm sorry, April 19th of this year, and, uh, we worked with them to piggyback off their bid, and had some discussions about, um, different contractors in town here, if they'd be okay with it, and then, uh, I talked to them, and they said, their comment was for that price, you can deal with that, so, uh, the price is... Dollar sixty a square yard, a dollar, uh, fifty-nine point eight.
Well, that's what it says here. You wrapped it in hair, and take that back out.
It's got it right here. So, uh, we got a pretty, pretty good program this year, quite a bit of work to do, where we've been transitioning into more preservation, uh, so, Reserve Petroleum is the, was the low bidder on that, that contract. Next year, uh, we're most likely going to bid with those two counties, um, to get a better price, and if we're all grouped together, so we think we can get even maybe, work a better price next year. So, um, with that said, I would recommend award to Missouri Petroleum Products Company for 2016 chip seal program, amount of $305,026.
Got a contract?
Yep.
I move that we award and sign the contract with Missouri Petroleum for the preservation chip seal program.
Second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Bid discussion and award for 2016 dash 24 commercial freezer at Pringer Center.
We had a bid opening Friday for a new commercial freezer down at Pringer Center, we got three bids back, um, lowest of which was $7,426.85 for what was spec, did receive an alternate for lower than that, briefly discussed it with Greg, he recommends steer clear of that one. Um, they did get a grant for $7,250, which would be the balance of $176.85 that you'd be asked to cover. Um, the recommendation is to award to B&amp;J Peerless Food Service for $7,426.85.
What's wrong with the altern? It's great up here. What he did, just didn't like something about it, it's not as good of a brand or reputation.
Yeah, that's the thing, and we had, we had gotten two quotes before this went out for bid, and whenever we were looking at those, he felt strongly at that time that it was inferior, and so, I talked to him briefly about this bid, the way it came back, and he said, yeah, it's, well, steer clear of that, so anything more specific than that, you have to talk to him.
Yeah, he had told me that too, so... That's probably a hundred and some bucks isn't that, 'cause I think, hadn't we, uh, budgeted like ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, so, I think this is, I appreciate you getting this grant.
I assume this is taking the old one out, putting the new one in?
Yes.
And install?
Yes.
Want to explore the alternate, or you get the...
I was just curious why he wanted steer clear from it, because lowest isn't always the best, but I was just curious why, he didn't like it. The top one is compatible with what we already have, in there right now.
The cheaper one's cut, I don't want her... Cheaper one is not, is, doesn't have the quality as, as the other ones. Seventy-four hundred dollars got a better compressor, better coils and everything in it, and fans, than what, uh, the, the cheaper one does. It's just like comparing it to a Hugo versus a Mercedes, that's a Hugo, you get what you pay for.
Okay.
Good?
I'm good. I like, I like a hundred and some bucks over ten thousand.
You got a contract then?
No, it's definitely...
I move that we award to B&amp;J Peerless for the commercial freezer at Pringer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, originally we had budgeted ten thousand dollars for a freezer.
Yeah.
And so with the grant, it's, our cost, one seventy-six is what it's actually, cost.
Oh, whoa, the grant?
Seven thousand three hundred thirty dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking, I thought it was for the amount, yeah, I'm fine with that. That's great, I thought we got a grant for the whole thing, so...
No.
We talked about it, but the price went up.
Yeah.
That's fine. I already thought it was, Sam.
I feel like a hundred and seventy-six dollars is better than ten thousand, I like that. Okay, the...
Pay the rest of your taxes.
Twenty fifteen dash twenty-nine discussion, renewal, One Collector Banking Services, tax bill and assessment form printing, processing, and mail-in.
We bid this in two groups last year, there's the general banking and investment services, and there's this portion. Um, the other one was a four-year contract, this is renewable, annually, talking with Larry, didn't want to make any changes, so this is just the renewal, no increase or anything? Any questions?
Nope.
How many renewals are on this?
Up to two more.
Use the Denver Gem.
Where you going, Sam?
I move that we renew the online, the One Collector Banking Services, the tax bill and assessment form printing, processing, and mail-in central bank.
Second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable, it's about fifteen or twenty of them out there, are utilities due? No.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Approval to purchase training simulator with LEPC funds.
Yes, uh, left up there for you, uh, Northwest Hazmat, a sheet of paper. Due to the Local Emergency Planning Commission, which receives funds through the state, uh, do what's called Territorial Title II funds, so, any business in the county, the city that has any hazardous material has to report to the state. Uh, we get a portion of that, usually around five thousand, fifty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, so this money, uh, in the LEPC can be used for training, uh, equipment. Uh, we have been looking at something like this, uh, for over a year. With Phillips Fifty-Six Petroleum in our backyard, Midland Transport, Jeff City Oil, uh, this is a simulator of a large tanker, just like you'd see going up and down the road, carrying gasoline. Uh, the training on these is, is very minimal to get in the state, they have a tractor-trailer unit, uh, to the University of Missouri, and there's only one of them in the state. This is something, uh, that we could actually use within the county, for all the local fire departments, and here for some surrounding counties. Uh, it rolls, uh, as you can see, it's a miniature tank with all the safety features on it, so that teaches the firefighters and emergency responders how to actually, if you have to offload, uh, maybe a bad accident, how you can do the sealing, proper sealing, in case of leaks. Uh, so, it is a sole source, uh, the LEPC did approve to purchase the tank, uh, trunk, truck simulator, seventy-two hundred plus the shipping. Uh, we have partnered with, or are trying to, still partnered with, Phillips Petroleum, Midland, and Jeff City Oil, as to see if they would buy the other, uh, assembly parts for the simulators to do the training, uh, because they are the biggest suppliers around here. Uh, so, they have agreed to that, we haven't had the dollar amount yet, but if we can get the simulator, and they can purchase, on the third page you see, the other listed items, stinger assembly, and the hot cat kit, some of these other things, and the training, it would be a good partnership with, uh, our business in the county and the city, to have something like this that we can use to train on our own, having included the city of Jefferson, all the county departments, and our surrounding counties as well, uh, through the, uh, LEPC, so... The LEPC has grown funds for several years, we've not really spent any money, uh, to speak of, as far as training items, uh, for the hazardous materials and chemicals, that moves up and down the highway, so, the request is the commission to approve the purchase of this as a sole source. So we went ahead, Denver went ahead and read the ad about a week or so ago, um, just because it is a sole source of the process we have to use. So it'd be something that we can load in one of our trailers, and take it to, you know, one of the county departments, roll it out, and you fill up, uh, two hundred gallons of water, and they actually are trained on how, how to prepare for such a kind of emergency situation. It's been very fortunate, uh, with all the transport vehicles that we have up and down the highway, that we haven't had a serious accident, so, uh, this, again, just helps train our responders, and take their emergency drive.
So this just will be used in Cole County, or...
You know, we, we've looked at it through the LEPC, 'cause every county has an LEPC, it's a Callaway County LEPC, it might be that, you know, our guys will take that, uh, our team members, and do the trains, say, for both the fire department, or Tom and Boone, or whatever. It would be a cooperative effort between all our surrounding counties to help that, uh, and ain't the freight cost, it might cover fuel, or some of the guy's time, uh, to do that, but, so, it would be, like, that's the goal, to train all these other local departments too, uh, in our surrounding counties. They all have that, I mean, Miller County has just as much traffic as we do going back and forth in the lake, so, I think it's, uh, it'd be the only one like this in the state of Missouri, uh, that, that we would have here in Cole County.
That's more or less what I was wondering, is, you know, why couldn't it be used statewide, I mean, I wouldn't think, you'd be training on it that often, so...
Right, yeah, it might be something, you know, if someone wants to do that, if the, we have to take the training class and train the trainers, and be able to teach that, and they will come in and do that as part of, as part of that package, very hard for folks to do that.
And we really do have a lot of gas trucks, why would you, it's...
We put in for this, this tanker training, uh, two years ago, we're still on the waiting list, there's only one in the state, so... Something like this, we can roll in the back of, like I said, one of our trailers, take it out, uh, over the high bar, or take it out one of the county departments, do that at each fire station if we need to, annually, or, uh, in the local department as well, so I think it would be a pretty good, uh, situation. There's several of them, uh, you know, that are out there, this here is just the more compatible something that you can use, wheel out the back of the trailer, set it up, and, uh, and use it time after time, after time after time. Any other questions?
Nope.
You need us to award this then?
Well, just your approval, uh, yeah, we'd like to ask, since it is a sole source, that the commission approved the purchase of that, and I can't forget that.
Okay.
Sole source.
Oh, sole source.
Just purchasing for sure, but we have to use those procedures, we're, we're a sole source.
So you ran the letter, and then getting responses, and so...
I will, uh, with the approval, this, I will keep the commission informed on the funds coming from, uh, Phillips Petroleum, which, uh, request to grant to them, uh, to purchase the rest of the product as a cooperative effort.
That's great, you can get them kind of, that makes sense.
You know, it's really interesting talking to Midland and Jeff, and all, they have no training for none of their drivers, anything like this. So they're kind of excited about it.
For their drivers, they'll go through this training too.
Yep. That's, that's the whole point.
I move that we approve the sole source for Northwest Hazmat.
Second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Bill.
Carter approving a financing agreement and related documents for construction financing by Mid America Bank of the Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement Project.
Tommy sent you guys an email last night, she couldn't make it today. Her copy?
She's speeding.
Speedy?
Oh, yeah, she did, she just stopped.
Is she the one that got...
Yeah, she was.
Tell her, thanks for taking you two on the economy.
Actually, you can take it, you know, like your, like your...
Take your eyes. I wouldn't know anything about that, Sam, I've got liners on me. I'm not that shallow.
Basically the same as the Parkview Meadows, NID.
Temporary financing, um, within here is the note, the paperwork from the bank, and authorization to do this short-term bid, so, take reading. Need an approval, a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to use Mid America Bank too.
I move that we approve a financing agreement with Mid America Bank in authorizing and directing the issuance of a limited general, general obligation, temporary note, Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project, Series 2016, and the principal amount, I'll fix the, three hundred fifty thousand, in the Cole County, Missouri, in authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection, there with.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
You do all of them, that you just get to read on here, I think I want that. Did you get all that, Lynn?
Yeah. One's assigned.
You want this one?
I took short.
Oh, okay, so you were serious, you got it, you got it. Debbie knows, you gotta take care of it.
Yeah, we've got, uh, just that last night. Signing of management rep letter from Williams Keepers.
So, you got presented draft financials last week, this is the management rep letter that we need to sign in before they will give final financials.
So are we saying that we're okay with the documents already?
Um, this is just more saying we're, these are representations of what we've done, and that we've done everything we're supposed to do, for more than issue of, I don't know, like, just being, we can still have a discussion if you have questions about the draft.
Well, I... Right, so I'm okay doing this, I just, um, I haven't gotten covered through all that, and it's my shooting, but, anyway. Just wanted to get through a little bit more of it, I should do that today, so...
Okay, they're on the agenda to present final financials next, so, we haven't filled in.
But, no, I mean, we can go ahead and sign this, I just...
Right, right, this is just saying that we've done everything we're supposed to do, represented ourselves correctly, and now, just being...
I move that we sign the management rep letter from Williams.
Second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any other issues to come before us?
One, that's an old issue, as far as the fire alarm smoke detectors within the IAS department. Jennifer did bid that, we had some bids, I think there was a discussion about it, the only thing we didn't like was the monitoring of that, the thirty-five dollars a month, are we okay to go ahead and install that for eight hundred and eighteen dollars, and then have a monitoring?
You have several bids.
Okay, I think we have, yeah. First one's down to security, what's the changes? Jennifer, um, did you have several, four bids on this, as far as the fire, for the eight hundred dollars?
Yeah. No, they do the fire alarm stuff, down in the antenna area, so, maybe I could get more of it.
Maybe I could get more of this. It was under the window and that's what we currently have, I forgot about that.
Probably need to get it on the agenda this time, maybe.
Is there going to be a green light?
Yeah, if it's going to be monitoring, I should probably have it.
We'll be back on the agenda if there's any more discussion about it. Okay, that's all.
So that's going to be just the install, some else we're going to monitor or?
It was going to be both. Currently doing both downstairs. I don't have Dale come back. Jennifer did talk about an extra five dollars a month for cell phone service, if you can even call them.
Uh, I know they call my cell phone, if somebody gets to along the end. Yep, Sam, you got a couple more. You might as well. I'm gonna get you a new bid.
Where's the square yard?
No, I sent an email yesterday, this, that gentleman had awarded it.
Yeah, you got, you got a few of them there, see.
We were having a couple dozen of them, of course, so.
There should be, that do, that you sign the bulk of it, so it's messed up, here's all.
Pressure and important assignments, and then I'll deliver that to the bank.
When will the construction stuff be ready for the final?
Next year. I'll bring a engineering contract out next week.
Also, I mentioned this, the budget transfer. Bring this money in, pay this money out.
Or Sam, on Randall Drive, what do you need from us or from the landowners? I know it'd be interesting to see if snow removal is going to add something to the NID, some of what we do with Parkview. What's as bad a shape as it is, I'm not sure that, I'd look for some guidance from you as far as tearing up some equipment.
We'll give a landowner and have him.
I mean, if you're not concerned about it, but I know there's some pretty good chunks of concrete that are broken up.
We'll take a look at it and see, but I know when we met with him last week, or talked to him, and he'd be as interested in it, so we'll take a look at it.
I'll have Larry Fisher take a look and then come back to you.
Yeah, because you're kind of, I would, I would vow to you, you're, you're going to know better whether.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
You're, you're the experts.
I just don't want to tear something up. My only concern, I understand.
Do we have any other issues?
We've got one hundred and one brands up the speed. You know, every year we put in one land security funds, do, that come out to the state, to each county. So as in the last few years, we've put in funds to operate the hazardous material response trucks, Mobile Works Command Center, we did that again this year, AMY generator load testing, so those three items were approved. This diagram here that I just handed to you, is something that we've looked at for a couple of years, not only in Cole County, but throughout the region. It is, and the reason we've looked at this one here, is compatible with our outdoor warning system. So what this is, is something as, as Kristen remember a few years ago, Fourth of July, we had Major Thorpe come in. We have no outdoor warning systems at all in the downtown area. This is portable, we can set this up, we can do a loud voice message with it, we can also set off the tornado warning or like a sirens, we can do that. So this was kind of looked at in our, I've kind of talked to you through the years about the fire risk programs, the federal government. One of the big issues is a gap is outdoor warning notifications, mass notifications in outdoor events. So this is what we've looked at, and I did put this in, into the grant. I have not heard yet whether we've got that or if we will. But this is something that could be deployed to, not only our county for Fourth of July, for the fair, any other big downtown events, where we would have a way to put out a loud voice message over this system or activate the weather warning sirens. So just kind of bringing you up to date, I've not heard, I know that it was voted on through the RSOC in the disc one, the fourteen disc one, and it was rated very top priority. So I kind of want to get you the heads up on that, and when we find out more, I'll let you know.
So what, what is the cost of this?
Right at fifty thousand dollars. It's all solar, just like our systems are. We've looked at, I looked at a couple of other systems, one of them is a large generator operating an air compressor system that runs off a fan. That wasn't compatible. This here is something you can set up, as I said, it's a bearing room downtown. You can plug it in if you have a generator there, or it's all solar, just like our systems are now, it's a business engine again. So it's very compatible. It's about twenty some feet overall length when it's down, and as you can see in the diagram, it's a twenty-five foot height. So our speaker system are nine, this is three, so it's still, you get pretty good, almost a mile radius with that. It's something we're looking at for not only our county, but it would be a deployable asset to any of the counties in the region, as do the thirteen counties. And they kind of looked at Cole County, but we just upgraded our system a few years ago to one of the better systems, and this is compatible, made by the same company. So whenever we find out more on this, I'll bring that back to you. But I think it'd be something very worthwhile to use within our community.
So what is the wait time, when would we, we know whether we're going to?
Probably within a month, yeah. But along with that, they approved the telecommunications system, one of the mobile command center, which that was put in in two thousand and five to replace all of the phone systems. Had Matt team would replace a lot of our air monitoring systems. So all in all, we're going to pull in probably about a hundred thousand dollars out of that, out of that hundred. There's only two hundred forty-nine thousand available for all thirteen counties, so we can throw a little in this year. And that one comes to us, because those teams are RPC, they do the purchasing, we went and that's what the boys report. So just done enough there.
You did a good job of finding this thing. Any other issues before we go into closed session? Why don't we take about a five minute break and then we'll go into closed session?
Yeah.
I move that we go into closed session, present to Section six ten point oh two one, Sub one for legal actions, and Sub seventeen for communication.
Call, call?
Sam?
Yes?
Jeff?
Yes?
Chris?
Yes. Am I correct? Check, check. Hey, Larry?